Congratulations to the lab. We did really badly for this year's games for my nation, underdog, individualism, we received in stress for all. Introduction of guests. Would you have some?
Not she's like, she's herself.
Yeah, awesome. Okay, I'm here to talk with Mr. Stone, do we have anything allowed to keep agenda?
I don't think so.
One point five good degree, who wants to start?
Oh, sorry. So my good degree is not really your typical good. It's been a pleasure to serve on this board for six years and when I started in twenty nineteen, I will admit I will be. For because things were a little tough. But it's amazing how a group can come together, be cohesive, how administration, how staff, students, how everybody has. The leadership, just everything has come together together and it breaks my heart to leave. But I feel like we are definitely on the great side of prospecting school in nineteen, in twenty nineteen, I will say. How many years the school is gonna make it, well, the current administration, that was my question. But so my good degree is just been so a pleasure and I think that this board is working well. And I think the school is gonna be great, it is great, gonna be even better, greater, I should say, I should say, definitely. And I think that you're definitely on my road to de-investmentation district, I see that and I appreciate all the staff, all the administration. And I really appreciate the rest.
There is almost.
Looking at me.
It's not been a great month for us and I'm just.
Um, let's see, my good to great is I got a phone call from the master gardeners of Jackson County and they said, we have a two hundred dollars, do you have a project you wanna do? And my great is I, I knew exactly which teachers to talk to. And they got excited enough that they are now meeting, um, thinking, um, at lunchtime and kind of putting together some ideas so that we can try and take advantage of this.
Uh, my good to great is outside the school really, but it kind of started here, Mr. Stone in Central Oregon. Here, that's good, the grades are almost gone, it's been a lot of fun, but there are a lot of student participation and we'll talk about it a little more.
And mine is kind of the opposite, mine is going to be from a great to a good. I think the great part of it was the five of us together. If one of us has our own little aspects and experiences and knowledge. And with Virginia here, we're gonna put even here. And she has an asset that might be something else. And we've never had such real thought. A great, that you're good. With the option to get back together. Equalizing our knowledge and experience and knowledge. We don't care if it's just that.
So my good to great this month is, um, um, I mean, there's thousand different things that could be, but there's one that stands out in my mind every day and I'm reminded of every day. And, and that's Jessica. And the hiring of Jessica has been, I'm unsure how to put words to it. She has been our right hand, our left hand, she's learned the position and she, we don't have to direct on our side of things. Greg and I and, and Regina do not have to direct the work. And it's truly been revolutionized in, in our front office and, and so I just wanna recognize her, she, she is gone. She's done some amazing things, we, we have, we have expanded the scope of that position because of her skill set tenfold. And it, it's pretty awesome, it makes our jobs easier and, and it benefits our entire school community. So I just wanna say, great job, Jess, proud of you, keep it up, you got, got a lot more work to do.
Well, I was just out, outside earlier about a half an hour ago before, before the meeting, those five men out there coaching, you know, school around. You know, most kids were given four different activities where they were, maybe a single kid was engaged. Getting rights because the practice was structured, organized, kind of, you know, people out there investing in the young kids. I think that's pretty great, that's something to invest in, keep on that level of involvement, of engagement, those guys.
Mine is that this board is that I get to work in chief chair, there's been like no drama, which not gonna work, I'm sure it's coming, but usually at this time, it's been like fifteen different things and we were just gone for forty-six hours together and there was no problems, so it's just super cool, they bonded.
The teacher input. Community input, okay, we want to. Motion second, can you pass them to the debate? You want to do, we'll start with Mr. local.
Hey, just have a few things to highlight this month. Now, I'm not gonna lie, the beginning of school was, had its challenges. We had a seismic project that was being wrapped up with, and anytime you move teachers, you have struggles and we had stuff that was put in conicses all over campus. And moving that back into classrooms and finding time for teachers to set up their classrooms and things that were lost, things that were misplaced and trying to run all that down and still have a maintenance of the studio crew that was left intact at the end along with teachers was a pretty amazing feat. But it was hard, it was hard and, and if I'm completely honest, we weren't ready for school. We had some things that were undone and, and they came together, I knew they would, but it was really difficult, it was really hard on our entire staff and we're still not ready. I mean, we still have components of, of the start of school that, that we're struggling with to try to to get in order, but we're, we're gaining on it and we'll get there and our enrollment is, is pretty solid. We just enrolled two more kids yesterday. I think we're sitting right about two eleven, two twelve in the regular, in, in the charter school and then we have ten homeschool kids or eleven homeschool kids. So, and we're talking about right now how we're, you know, I'm gonna advertise and do some more things around recruiting and there'll be a whole thing around that down the line that we'll talk more about probably next month and and as we enter an era of comprehensive planning and talking about, you know, big picture things that we can do to sell our district as a destination district in the region. And so we're good there, Cycle Oregon has been uh, really hard for the people that have committed, I, I wanna commend our coaches and Josh, Josh has done a fantastic job of, of taking that on and as a community member and, and leading with that and Josh, I mean, he spent a lot of hours, a lot of effort, energy there and I just wanted to tell you thank you on behalf of Prospect Charter School that without your commitment, there, there wouldn't have been the successes that our kids and our programs have had with running with Cycle Oregon, so that's been really good. Middle school football. So it came to my attention and Greg's attention that, you know, our gear in our middle school was not what it should have been and the helmets that we released were, were junk and I looked at them as a, not just as a superintendent, as a parent, and I wouldn't put my kids in them helmets. And so after some jostling around and moving some money and finding some money and, and canceling a couple of contracts with rental company on the helmets, we were able to order all brand new helmets for our middle schools and we owned them. And they're, they're pretty nice and, and new shoulder pads for our kids and put, put all of our middle school kids in new gear, which was a huge deal for our middle school pride and the middle school students, but more than that, just our parents and, and and our coaches too. Just to support that, that administration, you know, reached out to them and, and tried to support kids and their safety, so that was a big deal. Kids are excited, I ordered new decals for their helmets, so they were supposed to be here yesterday, they didn't show, they were supposed to be here today, they didn't show, but they'll be here before the birthday, so hopefully. China's alarm is. So, kind of a, a let's see, how, how do I wanna say this? So we had to jostle a lot around special ed staffing. And to support kids where the support is needed. And, and it's, it's a, it is a balancing act. Sherry is awesome in trying to figure out how, how to pay different pools of money, take different pools of money and pay for certain people to cover special ed, cover title, cover general ed without, you know, digging into too much further into our general fund and so I just want you to know that as things change, it's kind of like when you're an old football coach and I'm an old football coach. When the kids show up and you take a look at the kids, you take a look at the talent that you have, then you adjust your program to based on, you know, how do you, how do you adjust in such a manner that you can double down on your strengths and we do that, especially with special ed every day. Because we have so many dynamic students that come with hurdles that we have to address and help support, that we constantly are moving pieces to, to, to best support them in the classroom and the least destructive environment, so I just want to give a shout out to our staff with that and, and for Sherry's leadership on, on the money end of that, it's been fantastic. We have a couple of staff that are being mentored and I just wanna, from the ESD, they're our new staff. And then I also wanna mention that we do have two staff members that have gone through the training and are getting extra duty stipends to work with staff peer to peer. And we have a secondary person in Katie Lonnie that is gonna be doing some peer observations with teachers this year. And Kristy Bliss in elementary will be doing some peer observations. Helping with, you know, third, third party perspective or second party perspective in the classroom, so plus we have a couple of ESD mentors working with new teachers. Gear Up Funding is kind of a, something that's kind of on the edge, the feds, if not, the federal government has not come they have not committed money for year four of renewal money from Gear Up and October first, by October first, it has to be some decisions that are made for the fiscal year. If the federal government does not come through with funding, the grant will end. And it'll be phased out year four, which is this year, which means we will lose that program come October. And we will lose a valued staff member that's an extra resource for kids and so yeah, that's a little bit stressful for some people and it's stressful to me too because Gear Up has added a ton to our school and, and so losing it short of seven years is really unfortunate that we end up doing so. So there'll be more on that, I'm sure, next, next month, we'll hopefully, I, I did send letters of support to Representative Pence and to Senator Wyden and Senator Merkley that were directly sent to their offices in support of Gear Up Funding, so last night, I think there was a, there was a town hall and I was going long into it, but I got tied up volleyball and then was late by the time I got back and missed it, so we have a foreign exchange student this, this year from Germany with a new family that lives down the hill and and it was an interesting, awesome exchange I had with a family. Lady called here, super frustrated. She, the first person she got on the phone was Lacy, so you can imagine how that conversation went. And Lacy was accommodating and supportive and eased her tension about enrolling this foreign exchange student and look, the other school district that she was trying to enroll in was, there were some hurdles and she, they didn't get called back and there, there were some frustrated parents that were involved there and they had a, a younger son that was a sophomore and that went to a name related school district and one thing led to another conversation, we end up enrolling this foreign exchange student and literally after finding out about our district, this family didn't know we had athletics, didn't know we had an ag program, didn't know that we had advanced classes, didn't know what we had for the student success center, there was, they didn't know anything about our district and they only live not very far from here. And so by the time Lacy and myself got done talking with this family, she enrolled both of her kids. And she's like, holy cow, I can't, I just am blown away with the level of service that we got through this process and, 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 and her kids are the foreign exchange son and, and her her bio son are both now students here, so that's pretty exciting to to hear that kind of feedback and how we made that lady feel and her family feel welcomed here. And that's part of that customer service posture that we have as a school district to say, no, this is a destination place, this is a place where you can call home. This is a place where your kids will be supported and you'll be supported. I saw on the news the other day, there was an advertising that was coming from north, it was out of Portland. I can't remember the school district, but it was a charter school and I've seen it on social media several times too, where they say come home to a school district where parents still matter. And I'd like to think that parents matter and parents' opinions, parents' support matters and and so when we have these difficult conversations with people that are frustrated about whatever it may be, if it's the right fit, hopefully they'll be able to walk through the doors and enroll, so there's a plaque that's being, that has been ordered that will have each of your names on it as school board members, we're gonna hang it on the NPR. It's a custom, nice plaque that, that commemorates the seismic upgrade of the facilities and that's required of the grant. So that will be, once, once that's hung up, I'll, I'll let you know where it's at so you can take a look at that. And then reimbursement on the rental with the, with the fire hall. Where in September, they're still not completed, completely finished with the fire hall. I'm hoping that we'll get a full month's reimbursement for September. I mean, that remains being seen right now, but, and there has been some struggle in getting the reimbursement or getting a check because they haven't been reimbursed. But it sounds like we've got to a place where we may be a little involved with that. So, you're getting paid, so I, I think, last time we got a check was April, wasn't it? Oh, oh, yeah. Okay, okay, so. Through September, yeah. Yeah, so we've gotten five months paid or through August, so we'll have another reimbursement for August and September, hopefully. So that's thirty-three hundred a month. And then the last thing is, is Greg came to me and said, oh, you know, the Shady Cove School is getting rid of the wrestling mats. You know, we need to call down there and figure out what's going on, so I called down there and Dave, the athletic director, you know, works at the high school, really good dude, at Eagle Point, called him and said, hey, what's the deal, Shady Cove trying to get rid of their, their mats, well, come to find out, they have old mats that were from White City Middle School that, what's the name of it, White Mountain? At White Mountain that they weren't using and they're using the Shady Cove mats as backup mats for the middle school at Eagle Point. So I called Jacobi's and Andy and Jamie and they went over and looked at them this afternoon and said they're in pretty decent shape, they've been outside, they'll at least make something for wall matting or practice matting and so we're gonna work on picking them up. So they were, they were just given to us, so that's all we got.
Is that the same file that I texted you and got?
It's at the yard. They're in the yard, at Eagle Point Yard, at Eagle Point Central Office or Major's Office.
It's funny, I got your message from like three other people, hey, did you see wrestling mats, did you see wrestling mats? It got out fast, I mean, there's wrestling mats out there.
So they committed, Jamie and Andy committed to them today and, and I told, I told Dave, if they're decent, we'll take them. So they went and looked at them and said, hey, they're, they're decent, let's get them, so now we gotta arrange groups.
Three, two, three, three, you know, all three, two, and three, three together. Real quick, do you want to run the dang you feel, run down the top or are you ready on your own? I tell you, yeah, they say summer is when school slows down, slows down, huh? It's ripping the roof off and leaving us with no lights for two weeks, two weeks before kids show up to school, I don't want to see that. Hey, that's great, yeah, back to school, I tell you, it's the only time of year when Amazon boxes show up faster than less. Yeah, and these new desks, they don't show up till October, so, so the kids are on the floor and I tell the parents, it's flexible seating. Yeah, flexible seating, their knees are behind their ears. There you go, that sums up the funds. Uh, over here on the right, I got, I got some big font on your space, those are the additional documents, ones in the back. I'll get to you on this other one, it's a double sided, one pager. That, that you can browse. I'm gonna run down the professional development, development calendar and, and just maybe bullet points and I'll kind of go over the first, first ones for each date, we'll go through December. So we've got Renaissance Star Computer Adaptive Tests from kindergarten and early literacy all the way up through twelfth grade. So we have one progress monitoring system for kindergarten through twelfth grade that covers both English, writing and math. Not a bunch of writing, but a lot of reading and math. And so we can track the student's progress in specific strands, we can see how they're going to do on their state testing and you can dial in our alignment and our mapping and be very intentional about the skills that we can develop and create interventions for the students. Still a few bugs in the system that, that we're working out with all, how all of our software works together with clever and Renaissance and future logins and student logins. But we're working those out together and we've already had some elementary school teachers test students and we give results back and so one of the things that comes with that first initial class is professional development through Renaissance. And so last, last week, well, it's September twenty fifth, but should actually say the fifth. Last, last Friday, we, we got the teachers together, we're going to Minister Star and they covered how to do tests, practical tests inner administrator passwords so that major, like if a student needs to stop tests, there's the future practical password will freeze that test like those fire drills, so you don't have to start all over. You can even monitor pasting, things like that, so that, that was training number one and the next will include all staff in interpreting the computer adaptive test, looking at the data, looking at the scores, so that they will inform the instruction. And then following that, if Star Renaissance comes with a few tools for intervention and self pacing students on their own skills, so after, after, the third training will be how you plan part of the introduction for those students, how to take that data, how you access the tools that Renaissance provides you with and use that to move kids forward. That's, that's what, that's what great professional development is for. We're continuing on our mapping of what we're doing and drawing our standards out of assignments and content. One of the things that we worked on this last week was preparing to give all of our standards and things for quarter two. So in quarter four last year, we did some professional development, had some work done to really take a closer look at what we're teaching and when we're teaching it, how we're teaching it, which definitely helps with planning. So we'll continue that work in October, we'll be a little bit of time for that and the bulk of the October training, we're having Laura Miltonberger, the design of frozen doll and social emotional digital grill, and T S S specialist Patrick Kelly come in and give us the big picture overview of how all of this ties together. So that will be the bulk of October third and then as, as we get closer to the end of the semester, for the fourth, we'll have some more of that mapping time and to prepare us for the third quarter of the year and once those quarters are complete, folks will have a general idea of what they've taught, what standards they have covered, they'll have assessment data to look at to see that, they'll have star assessments and, and other assessments available to them to inform your teaching and dial things in the future, which will tie into the, the overall big picture of mapping our curriculum and aligning things from kindergarten up to twelfth grade. Other things that we do that we build into those days, well, this year we, we built in some grade book, with changes to grade book, collaboration sessions, so we can find out what the bugs were and what the successes and pitfalls were and work with help desk at L B L to file some things in. We did some check ins for enrichment to make sure we're on the same page for that intergenerational activities, senior advisory days, physical students and teachers collaborate on projects and activities. We did an all staff celebration at the beginning of the year review and I'm gonna go down to the bottom, it talks about rounding the concept and that overview. One of the things I, I bounced around at the COSA end of the year conference in Seaside and I was looking for valuing something and this has been one of the best years where I've found some direction and some value to, to bring back and and one of the things is there's a, oh, he lives in an old hospital, administrative, Clint Stewart. And he's, he's got books on, on the management and he dove into education recently. I mean, one of the things that I took away was this concept of rounding and it's, it's not just walking around, taking notes of what, what's Um, and it's, it's not just walking around taking notes of what, what's good, what's bad, what's, what's needed. Um, the, the four basic and intentional questions down at the bottom coming, coming categories. And I did a little tweaking for, for us. So, um, relationship building is one of those. Success recognition is another one of those. And removing barriers. And then, um, culture building and engagement. So, um, I ask these four questions of people at least once a week. And the way that I ask these questions is I go to, to in person. I don't make around just one person out the next. I'll, if I go to the social studies classroom, I return it back to my office. Record the answers to the questions on a spreadsheet or then make the plans and follow up with that. The reason that I do that is putting notes is not personal. Um, I'm attempting to build trust and a relationship with the person. So I want to put them on the spot. I'll make them feel like I've made the interview and Terry will, um, we've used this the last two weeks and, um. Make up. I have a priority list that, you know, green, red, yellow, to follow up with. It's called some what's urgent, what, what can get done down the road. So those four questions are, you know, what's one thing that brought you energy or joy this week? We were, what we're gonna celebrate for? What's one success, big or small thing this week that you're proud of, something that you're proud of? Um, what, if anything, is getting in the way of you and your students having a great start? And, um, as you look ahead, what's one thing we can do as a team to make next week even better? And so there were some things that, that came from this that we were able to address and act on and adjust. And then follow up with the person who gave us the information. So doing rounding and collecting that on, uh, on a spreadsheet. Then not being positive and hopefully a bunch of poster boards. That was one of our activities of folks that get in the room and they recorded all of. The answers to these four questions. And we're able to, you know, notice a student doing, um, challenging the floor. Is on track and engaged this year and people, you know, didn't realize that it's awesome. So that's, that's one of the things that I'm doing down there. Did I miss anything on here?
On the redirect, oh, process.
Over here?
Yeah. How does that, like, that, like, the classroom, you know, where we spend ninety percent of our time on the same problem? How's that? Like, I was a teacher supporter and how'd they handle that or how's that going?
So that, that's, that's coaching on the back, if you, if you knew that, and what, what admin support looks like. It, it depends on the challenging behavior and the problem that it causes and the severity of it. But, um, the, the intent of teacher managed classrooms is if somebody's saying potty words or somebody's. You know, twenty seconds late class, that's, that's something that we want the teachers to, um. Instead of getting one, seven hundred text messages a day about someone was ten minutes late, what are you gonna do about it? Somebody said a potty word in my classroom, what are you gonna do about it? Somebody turned him to a rock, what are you gonna do about it? Somebody, sometimes somebody's having a drama with a boy from the filter and I don't want him to explode in my room. What are you gonna do about it? It's coming back. Why don't we try this? And we, so if they don't feel comfortable saying, hey, are you engaged? What's the next step? Can we fix that? Um, and then, um, coaching pieces like we, we had one today where somebody was, uh, this student showed up late to my class and I want them out. Yeah, that's not an option. Who wants, we don't have a long school. We want students in the classroom. Why don't you try this? Okay, well, I tried this, but I think I want to jump to making them rewrite the student handbook. But, okay, so we want you to build a relationship with students. If you come in the classroom and approach it, I can do. I don't want you starting power struggle to the student where the behavior escalates. So one of the things that we're doing about this is we bring, brought Patrick Kelly in. Because we've done assessments with him of our entire system of patterns, patterns. And we're developing what, what is classroom managed, what is administrative managed? And these two girls and we're collaborating and engaging activities and I'll still be able to, to hash, hash this all. Did I answer your question?
I just wanted to show you that it's the coaching aspect, features and how to improve classroom management versus just go with.
Yeah, and that's where rounding comes in. You, you pay, are we proud of this week? What challenges have you faced this week? So it was like, hey, I, I tried to get these students who weren't showing up to write a paragraph about the importance of showing up in class and just school and taking a garbage. And that's where I can say, okay, I'm gonna go back and maybe not even go back. Prioritize coaching this and show up. And model. So we, we did a student who was, um, challenging and penalties were thrown out. So I went to the classroom this afternoon and modeled the conversation with that student and put the ownership in the screen scene. What are you gonna do about it? Did you realize these things are going on? And then, you know, you know, like, what, what response to see was positive. And if they engage and they take some ownership, I'll just see what the results are. Model. Well, that's an example of. Going in there and modeling, not coaching that in the morning.
But does that happen, like, in the morning in the classrooms, like, distraction, distraction time? Or is that after, let's reengage the student after the classes?
So if it's an incident where you've been punitive and the relationship becomes power struggle, then it's afterward, definitely. So, or, you know, I won't go in there. Like, today was, I made sure that that student didn't realize that I knew this story. He was just curious at first. It's like, hey, what's going on? Oh, so and so said, this to me, we're trying to make me do this and can they do that? I was like, oh, yeah, but let's have a conversation. Let's talk about it. So, and just kind of model to the adult movies. Like, this is the way that people notice that I was, um, challenging the behavior. And so, and then I did, that's, you know, like I said, that's where rounding comes in. And then, um, these things are aligned to, to Danielson. So he's like, hey, I do, I do expect and intend to be made to grow. So, so that. And then there's, you know, how to ask for help and, and what, you know, what the admin support looks like. The safety concern, obviously, we do that though. We want parents to partner with teachers and students. If that, if that needs to be modeled, then that's what, that's what we're modeling. We'll, we'll, we'll structure that and show them what that looks like and. Over the summer intentionally, like, there's the new parents that challenging students to part of the thing. So that first line of this means. Every experience was positive. Yeah, it was, it was something that was, like, mad at this guy. Invite me to dark here in the ocean or whatever, and I can keep his knowledge of not just his student, but other students. Three point five.
What I was gonna say, by the time I go third, most of the things I would comment on of ours and said.
Not tonight, though.
No, not tonight. Well, I was gonna say, I can, um, give ahead. You, you have me further down on that. Um, it is ramp recording season and, uh, stronger connections. Thank you, Sheri. Getting me on track and all of that and doing a lot of other amazing things. Um, or, uh, and, um. And early literacy is due by the September thirtieth. I know the big one that gets before this, before is the integrated program. And we'll do things that order, but if you don't care, oh, don't write in. Okay, awesome. So, um, you have my presentation in paper form. Um, I can, I was planning to log in really quickly to the media if I can make it happen something. And then Greg can set me up to share. If not. I'm working on it.
Okay, yeah. It should be open. There you go. There you go.
I'm here and she can be able to share. And I was smart enough to shut, shut off phone basically for, and then Michael John. So we shouldn't get any feedback. Let's see if it'll let me share. Did, look at that. You do on here. Oh, I see it's still on that screen. I'm gonna pop over here. Me too. Get over to the audio backup when I start sharing. So you should be good now. We'll start with what our purpose is. Why do we do the review of the integrated program? Besides meeting, meeting with the O D E, it's our chance to look at our goals. Assess our progress towards them and then reflect on how we allocate our resources. And if you're like doing things the way we have been or if there are adjustments to go need. In order to go through that process with the O D E, the first thing we look at is, um, their longitudinal. Performance growth targets, which they choose for us. Um, in conjunction with what we are gathering with information. The, and I sat down, I'm like, okay, anything where we were successful, I'm gonna highlight it in green. And I went through a whole thing and everything was green. And I was really, really excited to say that not only did we meet. Each of our goals for the twenty-four, twenty-five weeks. For everything that we have data on. And I'm gonna get to that in a minute.
Can I stop you just for a second on this one? I don't want to reiterate what Regina just said. Every single goal that we have data on, we exceeded on. And so it's really something to, to, to celebrate. And this is an effort because of the entire team. And those numbers are more than just numbers to this school district. When we've, a couple of years ago, we were so concerned about academic achievement. We're still not anywhere near where we need to be. But I can tell you that because of curriculum, because of the investments, leadership of our school board. And our administrative team here, with the help and direction of our teachers. Some of this stuff is starting to turn. And it's very apparent. We had a, we were on a call with Tanya Prizindal the other day. And she was jumping up and down. She couldn't believe some of the numbers that we, that we put up in this last year. So just something to keep in the back of your head about the direction of our school district. Board goals, curriculum, professional development, administrative oversight, teacher effort. Uh, classified effort, classified staffing, adding programming. I mean, the list goes on and on and it's all contributed to, to this. Which, as superintendent, I'm not gonna lie, I'm pretty proud of what we've been able to accomplish so far.
One of the really amazing things up here is almost no school reports. It's always a struggle. Not only to get, to make that kind of grow, but to say not just our whole student body. But what the state refers to as local groups are also making progress. And that we're, and in our case, local groups, um, count special education students and students experiencing poverty. For the most part. And when we look at those, that's where a lot of other districts can be struggling to pose that achievement gap. And we are bringing all of our cohorts, cohorts along with us and having a lot of success. So that's just gonna do it. Not leaving kids in the dust.
Do we know where we were like last year?
I can get it for you.
Or how this pans out. We kind of see this historical trend because the target twenty twenty, the target is. What O D E says, this is your, this is your baseline.
Right. We, we kind of, we get a range of like, pick these numbers. What do you think you can really commit to? And then it gets stressful to, I did not put it in here, but in many places we really are stretched out. Um, if you want, uh, longitudinal, I can get it for you. Um, our goals were set for twenty twenty-four based on the year.
Yeah, I think just in historical training. Either four-year cohort three years ago, which you're now seeing, how's that trending? Goal here, but actual outcome.
Sure, sure. So you would, so you would like to see like, like that for your cohort had a nice grade on track rate? You wanna see how those two colliding together?
Yeah, and how they come out or, or you kind of look at, you have the twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-two, something like that. The trend that direction. These are awesome numbers.
Right, but there has a. And, um, I can have that free in its mind. Any other questions on this topic? I have a note down at the bottom that says the third, um, third grade G L A efficiency. We won't have a table for it. And I'm gonna come back to that. Does Janet and I go into that and there's some information. Um, they asked us three big questions. Uh, they wanna know, how do you see your progress contributing to the outcomes and strategies in your plan? And your metrics around the goals? We do some pretty amazing things here. Um, our Brad Coach partnering with Project B Plus has created opportunities for our students and, and. Guidance and almost oversight. And a student has a portfolio with all their information and meeting with Janet. And they, the student tells Janet what they really wanna work towards and she's pulling together. Well, if you want that, you gotta work on this harder or you've already seen the fact that here's the resource. Um, we use our skills trainer. We went down on that and built this engaged classroom. This student has things already. Full-time counseling. All of this was part of our integrating. Advisory classes, create connections between students and staff. And I have the pleasure of being part of our attendance committee and seeing the growth there that you've really brought. K eight come into a, a, uh, consistent attendance and we're seeing growth there. Um, this year, are you gonna focus on the last pieces right there with high school really? A couple, we have a small school. A couple of kids, we big struggles for attendance, getting skew data. But those kids also deserve support. Um, and then we've been increasing opportunities for kids and rigor through, um, offering our C T elective. Um, second question, where have you experienced barriers, challenges and impediments towards your goals? Which brings us around to really the two best, the attendance that I've already mentioned. We tried doing it hard last year. We had that deal and there's kind of comments and we didn't budge. And so that is where we're gonna be hyper focused as a committee, um, this year and trying new things. And the good news is, it's not like we're in a situation, the organization is going to do this. And so really reaching out and looking who else has had success and bringing that here to prosper. Um, and then the other thing is, um, our third grade E L As, uh, O S A S data. There was a blank in the report from O D E. They didn't give us a number at all. And so looking at that, and no explanation of why. Of course, that's a guy, but I heard that. Um. And so Janet and I looked closer at why that might be. And it, it's, uh. Third basic question, this is the daddy test. The writing portion of the test is really good. And our students did not create enough writing to BS us. The good news, so there wasn't enough bulk for the scores to go through and give them a score. And that affected our E L A. The good news is, we're already way ahead of this with the adoption of, um, for writing. With our early literacy coach who's helping the implementation of that. And we just had a conversation over today about partnering with the full day to choice and we'll see where that. Now we just need to be really focused on how we teach the kids and able to explain to them what to expect and this.
The E L A, third grade E L A test is about six to five percent writing. So it's, it's a lot, it's, it's a large jump, um, close to two thirds. And that's how important they're placing the emphasis on writing. And, you know, we've been hyper focused on meeting and literacy through reading. And now we're gonna adjust some things to address the writing component.
And so we decided to support that. It's no lose to anybody who sees amazing as a coach, and the thing that was great, well, this was our one thing that I couldn't kind of like, bring up if it was one, we had to write. And, oh, activities that we're doing to support progress towards the targets. It really was much the same thing, three years of significant progress in graduation in the schools. We're on track, our ninth grade on track is growing. We're doing so well with our students being on track to graduate, but we're able to convince our distance learning. We didn't need a full-time person, it was one class period, right? We have a class period now, that says a thought about how our kids are getting, entering my school, getting it far, and being on track to graduate. And then we continue to foster our relationship with just work. And the final piece was just the general budget numbers, with general ideas of the items underneath them. The right pages paid out of this. It's not, yeah, CTE money that we're able to spend last year, that door will bust, looking towards that CTE diploma, partnership with Project B Plus, El Calz, and all the things we already know we're doing, that are moving the needle. That's where we're spending our money.
Three of them tracks, pretty awesome.
Questions? It really is, you know, I have to be honest.
Financial report, see what it's about to, oh, okay, I'm sorry.
I was gonna first financial, John has three probably this coming year, was interested in our state school plan. We're gonna be prepared early next month, we're expecting our probably much estimates. And then we're gonna start going up, we're going up to the, and expenditures by, and Lucy kind of watched it. And expenditures compared to last year, if you had talked about it, was just coming in, how that consideration still. And this was coming, you know, that of which compared to this year. The financial audit in store, and we came with draft in May, and we're gonna do the on draft. And we're gonna be stable for the early, and then the central order. And I'm safe, we'll be here on Friday, or on Thursday afternoon, and we'll do the double bond again, with all of the teams here. And then, which is the revenue store, come on, has, you know, twenty-five, twenty-seven, you're right, even just starting. And the thing that right now, we've been difficult to actually speak next, because of the ball. And it's a big, you know, this means maybe I can't deal with, I don't feel this year, and but feel free, just feeling, you mentioned, you're out. And you know, you see your battles, and you know, it's like, it's explained.
Well, okay, that should, that should say, you know, it's not, we're not gonna. The football theme, the volleyball theme, the Russian, because you've been, well, two big events were the month in front of you, baggage, like baggage. And just the tips of wanting, you know, a little bit, I was gonna say, and half, twenty-one for the college. That's what we wanted, in the last proposed book, so it's been good. Fit-wise, you saw it Friday, completing the one fifth good day, and we're actually getting money for it. We're actually doing the jobs ourselves, so we can get a legal, any music.
Did we get you a two-dollar bill?
There is a couple of two-dollar bills on.
In quarters.
When we did, whatever, in quarter, you said, we did it. We took almost generally two dollars. Yeah, it was only, there was only two or three minutes go around, but, well, the kids get excited, because the couple of them are little hustlers. And they come back, I just got forty-six dollars, everybody's got twenty-six dollars, and cash coming everywhere, it was crazy, it's funny, so. The cash is great, because they didn't get very, I was seeing, they're like, hey, he's small, let him get better pissed.
What are the young children, you know?
So, well, you can take their ID, or you can make them evolve. It's bringing in most pure vessels of old people, and where is it now? Where, but take your ID, oh, you're a dog, yeah! It's a little simple. Asbestos came on here?
So, no, it's, that's, so it's with the seismic, and so the change orders, they didn't think that there was any asbestos in, and, and as they dug in, they, they needed to have a maintenance company come in and clear it. And so they came, and they did find some asbestos stuff that was under some building materials that they had removed.
Yeah, so anybody have any financial questions?
Just one quick question on the comments on the shoulder pad, it's showing it was a weakness. Do we lease the vast of high school stuff?
Yes. A new football helmet, a new lightweight, you know, safety football helmets, five hundred and fifty to seven, depending on model. So it's a matter of expense, it's still expensive to lease, but makes it more affordable.
Well, yeah, it's because, like I mentioned, the purchase of middle school, is a purchase, not a lease.
Yeah, middle school helmets are a lot cheaper.
I didn't know it was the lease to say, for helmets and shoulder pads. And I assumed it was for high school, but because it's common on purchase of middle school, I wasn't sure, but it wasn't over that.
We leased the high school helmets, we purchased new helmet, we were leasing middle school helmets, but the middle school helmets that, that we were leasing were junk. So we sent them back and got new, new ones. So was there only, you know, they're literally a quarter of the cost of high school.
Financial questions?
Oh, do you, I've got information on personal report, but it just didn't include me here. You want me to? Okay. Linda Martin, we have classified reassignment, she's our new instructional assistant and preschool teacher. So she's preschool halftime, instructional assistant in the afternoon. Ricky Koval, we hired her as classified hire for instructional assistant. We hired Asha Denton, classified hire as an instructional assistant. And then we hired Mary Trussler as a classified substitute. And I wanna highlight Mary for a second, she was a homeschool parent that was not, and knew nothing about our, our programming, knew nothing about our school district, and she enrolled her daughter in the homeschool program a year ago. And she pulled her from homeschool and put her in our school, and then wanted to be part of the school. So, so she, now she's an assistant. So I think that's a success story from some of our programming that we didn't offer before last year. Extra duty contract, Savannah Bateman, we hired as a student council advisor to the leadership. Kristy Bliss, we, we rehired as our lit coach. Katie Lani, who we hired as our yearbook advisor, and Captain Morton, who we hired as our student coordinator. So there's those seven items or eight items. Now, what? There's two change orders in your packet, one for the asbestos inspection, and I don't know, there was some stuff that they removed and they tested. Leaving electric, it was to run individual circuits due to too many splits in the classrooms. They had to have a separate circuit that was by, on its standalone to run the too many splits in the classrooms in the MPR. And then it's a, it's cost neutrality, it's, it's just change order, both of them change orders. You have to accept them, yeah, those change orders, I think you have it settled. So last month, we talked a little bit about, you guys sent me back to the drawing board to figure out what expenses we had, or what, what it potentially could cost us to replace the bus barn and tear it down. So I did a walkthrough with Corey Vitus, we looked at it again. And he believes that it would cost somewhere in the neighborhood of thirty-five thousand to have it tore down. And that could vary a little bit based on who bought it, if they, if they, if there was wood that they, you know, could repurpose in it, which there seems to be, our little wood that could be repurposed if it went to the right person, that that would take, you know, a month, probably three weeks to a month to tear it down, unless somebody comes in and adds, brings in a pile, and hauls it off. And so, which I know, I know there's a little sticker shock to that, Deb, I know. But anyhow, just looking at options and reporting back to you. Using the concrete slab we have, we would have to pour footings. And we would buy an engineered building that was already pre-engineered. With the permits and prevailing wage to put it up, you're still looking at about seventy-four dollars and forty-four cents a square foot. So if you were to build a hundred by fifty building, which is pretty close to the footprint, it's about forty-five feet wide. You know, you're looking at still three hundred and seventy thousand dollars. What's that? Metal building that's insulated with roll-up doors, with office space, yep, and lighting all set up, ready to go, a turnkey. And using the concrete floor, with the exception to footings. And redoing the footings, yeah. So it's still a lot of money. And the thing that's gonna be interesting is, is we'll cherry-nary and meet with Troy DeYoung from PACE, and we're gonna do a walk-through, going, walk-through of our whole campus, we'll see some stuff. And we'll have an opportunity next week to, to probe, like, what are, what, where are we gonna end up here in regard to insurance without probing, we'll probe without probing. So just to kind of see, get, get any indication as to what case is going to end up, where they're gonna end up, where this is gonna lie as far as ensuring old buildings. So that's what I can report on tonight. It makes you stop and think, well, two hundred thousand for a building across the way isn't maybe a bad idea?
Why it? You work before, because you can still do that, you have to look at it with the, the fingers, and you move in like the circle up from the end, and you can make that more, more easy, friendly for what you want, you know?
And make it less than them, yeah.
You're still trying to make something work, make what we have work, what we do.
If they come back and say they won't insure it, you know, I think, pretty much, tear it down for them. And they're not a bus barn, what will we do at that point? And they come back and say, you know, we need to ensure this, or, no, I'll talk to them, it's like, you know? I mean, do you tear it down and just build a small, just an office, and nothing's there, or whatever? Or do you just set up like a bar port kind of thing, or something, but then you're able to, that, that, we're a part of instruction. No, all right, yeah, not the thing.
There's some of the stuff we can park outside for sure, but there's a large portion of stuff that still needs to be recovered. I, you know, I tell people this all the time, I, we don't have all the information, so we're in school play. And all, every month, I'll just come back with more information as it turns out. And then we'll, we'll have to make some decisions through this process of how we're gonna address it. No, no. Can I start the number building? Okay, you want me to finish it too? So in your board packet, you're gonna find sample policy, obviously this is the first, or, yeah, first reading in September, geez. First reading of, of policy, great, and I sat down and kind of went through this. And, you know, there's, there's a component of the policy, the adoption of the policy, that's, or adoption of the practice. So be thinking in your mind, what's the difference between policy and practice? Practice is what you have in your, in your handbook, policy is embedded in legal, the law, letter of what the state is requiring us to put in policy. School board develops policy, administration develops practice based on policy. So in that mindset of thinking about that, we will, once the policy is set, we'll go back to the drawing board and worry and work on a communication plan to our parents about the policy, and then give them an opportunity to weigh in on some of the practice. Our way of thinking about this policy is, is where do we have wiggle room? Well, we have some wiggle room off-campus, we have some wiggle room after hours. So the executive order actually covers from eight to four PM during, that's our school day. And then if somebody is off-campus, kids can use cell phones off-campus. So the wiggle room, and we kind of debated this and went back and forth, and Regina was part of our conversation as well, and we just triangulating our thoughts, and by the time we got done kind of processing it in our head, all three of us were in agreement that we really should eliminate the cellphone being on-person. When I originally started having a conversation with the three of us, I was like, hey, outside, out of mind, I don't, you know, if, if the cellphone's outside, out of mind, why wouldn't we pick those battles? But what ultimately we're, we're concerned about with that is, is that we end up having to fleece it way more than we should. So we kind of landed on, hey, in your locker, in your vehicle, in your backpack. And it's outside, out of mind, and then if there's an academic need for cell phones, and the teacher frontloads that, and, and they, and, and kids know about it beforehand, then there's an allowance for it based on an academic need, it has to be very specific though. And that's where we'll develop some practice in our handbook about how that is employed. So we went through and just kind of put in some language, or just with what is in the language. So Josh, you wanna lead as you go through here? So student possession or use, so both of those, of a personal electronic device prohibited from the start of regular instructional hours until the end of regular instructional hours, that's eight to four. We don't need to put eight to four in there, but that's what that means. Except is provided below, personal electronic devices can be used when students are not on school grounds and are not under supervision of school personnel other than a school bus driver, that needs to be eliminated. So just end it at of school personnel. What's that?
So you wouldn't end it as what's that is provided below?
Not under the supervision of school personnel. Uh not under the supervision of school personnel. So. Say that means you want to have that. Yes.
Does the state law require what? They have a the the start time, end time?
No.
Why don't you say you're in class for instructional time, you can ask for it too.
Yeah.
And if you say instructional day. You are getting it in a provided.
Yeah. It well, you wouldn't. The states intend, not at all, on campus at all during the day. Period, not during passing time, if you have a closed campus, can't have a cellphone. Um on school grounds during the instructional day. No, if they're on campus, then then kids can use cell phones.
So then isn't the bracket language for anything? Like you don't need it?
Uh you you could, you yeah, you could you could remove the whole thing, however, it does have that supervision. Of school personnel language in that second piece. So personal electronic devices can be used when students are not on school grounds, so it speaks to school grounds. And are not under the supervision of school personnel. So if we're if if we have somebody on the bus in the morning with kids. Kids can't have their cell phones out, if we don't have anybody but a bus driver. Then they can have their cell phones out.
So if they're on a.
That's how the law's written.
So if they're on a trip like or this system that's more, they shouldn't have their cell phones out.
They could have their cell phones out because it's after the instructional days, the instructional hours. Doesn't matter what trumped it is the what trumped it is instructional day. Okay. Yeah, okay. Yeah, from school is one thing, doing from an activity.
Is another thing.
But showing from the activities like what they do for.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
So are they allowed to have phones or not allowed to have phones?
No, they they can because it's because it's trumped by instructional hours.
So then I would get rid of that bracket language, because bracket language makes it sound like. Uh personnel electronic device can be used when students are not on school grounds, right, because you could do that like. And are not under supervision of school personnel, well, if they're under supervision of school personnel. Then what and one, we don't enforce what happens off grounds, if we really want to, we'll not adjust that.
Right.
And we want to be approaching some from that and giving some feeling for it. Then I would just call them higher bracket language.
Perfect.
And just leave it at instructional hours. Except is below, it gives the exception in the next character.
So when they go on and play, they leave it two o'clock in the afternoon. It technically their instructional hours are open and they're in front of like twenty two a game.
Yep, and if the. I would do strict interpretation.
Volleyball game or football game is expected.
But if they're going, then it's a player, it's not instructional hour, it's actually.
Right, it's actually.
The strict interpretation.
Yep.
They still.
Yep, that's right. Except is otherwise provided at ends.
Just so just so we're both desperate, so keeping that paragraph to read, student possession. Possession or use of personal electronic devices prohibited at the start of regular instructional hours. Until the end of instructional hours, such as private, period, and if.
Nope.
I still have one thing in my possession.
Yeah.
Because what do you consider possession, backpack? Isn't that in possession? Then you get the stuff, you pull it over.
So think so think of it in terms of this. Parents buy a fifteen hundred dollar phone in the world to a kid. And and they have possession of that, that they own it, it's something that their family has invested money in. And they own, this gives me heartburn too. And so it's finding that finite balance between. Possession by honoring the parent, honoring the kid respectfully. And still meeting the needs uh or still still meeting the requirements of the law, which your requirement of law says, uh uh off of you. No, no cellphone during the day, well, I could tell you that if I was working with J K. And I went to J K and said, hey, there's a new law and you can't have your cellphone. Anywhere on you, meaning you can't have it in your backpack, you can't have it in your locker, you can't have it in your car, you can't have it in your jeans. I've got a fight on my hands, don't I?
Yeah.
But that's the fight you have right now with black bracket language, if you take away the brackets, you don't have that fight.
Right, well, exactly.
Taking away that first bracket, it's used.
Yes, and that's a that's where I think we should have.
Yeah.
The strike, because it doesn't matter possession, it just if you bring it to my attention, now I do it, if you don't, I don't.
However, if a kid has it on their person in class, in their back, in their in their jeans. Or whatever, it is gonna create a bigger issue for teachers to police it and for administration to police it.
I see.
If it's, yeah, because outside, out of mind is really kind of a interpretation of. What's outside, out of mind, you can't tell I got a cellphone in my back pocket. Versus in your backpack, and so for specific as it. Locker room or backpack, and I just talked to Eagle Point Administration today. And they went with backpack and lockers and they've had almost zero issues.
But backpacks and lockers are fine, right?
Yeah.
Because but if you keep the bracket language, that's still in possession, because you're still in control of it.
Yeah.
So if you get rid of that, then as you say, basically outside, out of mind, putting a locker. Then you develop the practice of wherever you want to restore it.
Yeah.
And and practice and not in policy.
Yeah, exactly, we all we don't want to see it.
So then we get rid of that first brackets, have student student use of personal electronic devices, they're. Basic hours.
Get rid of possession.
Yeah.
Okay, I got you.
And if the state hates it, like, well, they gave us policy.
Yeah, that's fine.
Airpods or electronic device, if you have this new plug into possession.
Just want to see it, and the tagline outside, out of mind.
Student use. Student use.
I know my kids can have their hand in their pocket and he puts it in the way.
Yeah. Well, we'll we'll incorporate that in our handbook in practice, but I'm with you, Josh, I think. The it's better going with less is more here on the policy of things. Okay.
The more stringent you get, it's hard to go away from.
Absolutely.
And then you become a cop on campus.
Yeah, and they they don't bring it with.
You're already gonna have enough trouble with. I would. And I mean, if you have to discipline one without adding to pick a letter and store to. The scab you think that.
Yeah. Well, let's read the next paragraph, except is otherwise provided in this policy. Personal electronic device means portable electronically. Power devices capable of making and receiving calls and text messages. And assessing the inter- internet independently from a school's network infrastructure. This includes headphones and earphone in and earbuds attached to personal electronic devices. This does not include a laptop, computer, or other device required to support academic activities. Personal electronic devices may be used when use complies with the terms of. A student's medical provider order for the care and treatment of a medical condition. The Students of Digitalized Education Program, S T P N O R S three forty three zero three five. Or or an educational plan developed for the student in accordance. According to section five oh four of the Rehabilitation Act nineteen seventy three. Three, a written exemption provided to the student based on a request received. In J F C E B A R. And that's the form that's attached to the the back and we'll get to that.
So those before going to the next one, actually, please.
Yep.
Is there going to be? I guess the practice or procedure in place to actually scrutinize by orders?
No.
So we're gonna make them five or four, we're just gonna accept it.
If it's if it's an except, if if there's a team of people that have developed a five oh four plan for a student. And one of the accommodations is cellphone, a cellphone. In that combination, that decision is made by a group of people and we. We we don't.
There's very scrutiny on what it what the five oh four. Getting to that level, I guess, we have enough five oh fours up that there's scrutiny on. Is it, is there a valid reason for this answer, no, it's just accepting and signing off and standing.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah, I mean, a student that has autism. And they call it, you know, so they're they're maybe in a position possession of. Hey, the cellphone I'm possessive of and maybe they're high functioning enough to where. They're not a not, you know, like this.
Like I can see, I can envision knowing some of the people that feel. With iPhone, I have anxiety, I can't reach the outside world, so therefore you have to grant this.
You gotta have.
We can say they're like. Here's a red flag or whatever you want to call it, but.
You gotta have a.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, and then there's a process of the year, yeah. Um so administrative response sets request within ten school days. Of so if somebody fills out the A R form. Then it will go to administration and there'll be a decision made on on um. Whether or not a student has the right to to exempt this.
Most of our policy to give this the five and eight days is basically five, five days per week, and we adjust them to four and eight. But. I'm not opposed to giving it ten. If you have the extra timeframe for giving, want to be consistent policy to give to eight.
I was just gonna give this eight or a little ten too, just not a right then or.
But that's but that's beyond whatever it is we're so happy, so I have a policy a little bit. For on how to practice, I guess, best best practice. Because now we're about two weeks and two days versus just two weeks. Yeah, that's where you know. I'm not opposed to, I'm just one three dollars.
So this is where it gets into the choice, it kind of kind of muddies the water with practice. Um personal electronic devices. What do you what do you guys think and you want to do there, I personally? I mean, they're they're forcing us in this policy to make a decision on how they're gonna handle.
I mean, keep the little brackets and get rid of that as well. That to me, like, we're not police submitted outside of mind, we're trying to get it put over there. If you have it on you, I see it.
So you think that they should keep the entire maybe cap by students and. See, I think it should just be. Personal electronic devices, maybe put. A lot of students in lockers or backpacks. And not have the personal maybe stored in a student's person or student's.
Yeah, strike the first bracket, keep the number one.
Look, but you say take out not this.
But I'm saying where it says that personal electronic devices are not to be stored on a student's person or in the student's building, I think that's actually a little way. And I think that maybe stores, stores, personal, but maybe we do should go there, so.
I think that's so to me, that no bracket gives the flexibility to determine how we're gonna do it and also the the point back to the outside. If you have it on you, we don't care, we're not gonna search you for it, but if you bring it out of your pocket and I know it's not locked over there, now now I have to do it.
Well, she knows.
But the alternatives to it, so so I look at the brackets. They all should have a locker. But I look at the brackets as OSBA saying, you have these three choices. Right, I think we have the ability to interact if you want. But those are three acceptable choices that OSBA is presenting. And it's one, two, three, and of the three, I like number two.
Okay.
Well, getting rid of one and three. And I think that still keeps consistent outside of mind.
Right.
Don't bring it up, put it open, but don't bring it to my attention. And I don't see why I don't deal with that. No, it'll be handled.
Oh, there will be, so the second page at the top um talks about violation of policy and what. Uh a student might be subject to disciplinary action, I. I I really don't want to see detention or Saturday school or Friday school in that language. However, a change in storage requirements um is absolutely pertinent, the other thing is is there's four steps that are listed here. Which I think is ridiculous, I think there should be three steps, the first step. Is the student picks it up, it's taken from the student, you warn, you warn them and you take it from them. The second uh the second step is the parent picks it up. The third one, you meet with the parent and the kid and and maybe you. Employ, hey, when you come to school, you gotta check your cellphone in the office. Um because you can't for a certain amount of time, uh because you can't manage your cellphone. Um so but four steps seems excessive to me. That's my opinion, so I throw that. And now it goes into out.
I think it's theoretically three steps. Yeah, but the first step is the teacher doing.
It's a verbal reminder.
Second instance is I'm skating, it's coming to the office, it's going to do ice skating. And the third one uh would be now we're calling parents.
Yeah.
On the fourth is just a repeat of.
The only difference is is you give the phone back student on two and on three. You have a carrot come from the left.
And I think the policy that we hear, the practice can be more restrictive than it seems.
Parents have to come get it.
That would be our practice, so it would be a redirect to the student, give it back to the student the next time. Then you call the parent, the parent has to come take it up and you stand alone, meaning.
That would be the three, right?
Those are the three steps, however, we want to do that, but I'm telling you in practice, we really don't need more than three steps.
The porch is said, this guy's gonna violate all the three times, so we need to prepare what's gonna happen.
Storage requirements, that's gonna be, we're gonna lock it up, you're gonna have requirements to turn it in the office.
Um at the top, bracket language. But could it pay attention to at least four times the department? Actually, don't mind that, only because that is this big a carrot. It means saying, hey, these were options. We don't do Saturday schools, I'd have to change the prices. We don't really do that either, other times if you go to the bathroom or something in it, like it feels. Because, hey, we can. You can see enforcing harm of where we're at.
Yeah, we're moving away from detention, I guess. But it still leaves it in the option.
It does, it's supposed to leave you those options. Yeah, if this is what you already do. That's what you can go to.
It just keeps a lot of those with a stricter chain, and it tends to, so even the grand scheme will away. You don't completely get effective on complying people anyway.
So here here's what happens, we assign a Friday school, we got a classified person that's gonna supervise Friday school, we've got five kids. Four of them don't show up. And then their attitude, their parents' attitude is what you know.
Well, that's a challenge in school, right?
Yeah.
We have summer school, essential day, but they. You know, eventually can block it's free.
That's true, yeah, because they have to follow the policy, and their family, and everything, but. Those are the challenges that happen when we put. Compliance language together in policy. And and I'm not afraid of compliance, but I think engagement. Matters more than compliance, I'm with Greg, maybe we.
But policy, new clients, procedures.
It it is.
Right, so we give it, here here's the tools available to you, use the tools you need to.
Yeah.
But these are available to.
And the thing about detention is it's disconnected from what's really going on. Like coming up with a new storage plan is addressing, you can't manage the step on your own, you're gonna get there eventually.
Yeah, I don't see those as a step you have to do to get inside.
No, but I'm saying. Right, yeah, yeah, I don't I don't see detention as being. A deterrent as much as your phone is being.
No, eligibility might be even better.
Yeah, right, right, right.
You're eligible to play sports, you're eligible for this, you can't go in virtual traffic.
Right.
Those type of things are a hundred percent, but at some points, we didn't even grant people. Citations, right, are only good for people that comply with paying the five.
That's right.
Those people don't go to jail, right? There's the yin and yang to it, so.
So instead of Saturday, you want to change that to Friday school and then leave.
I think leave it out.
You want to take it out?
Yeah. Because who's gonna, who's gonna, you know. You just said you're. You know, four out of five aren't gonna show.
Well.
And you got, you know, your school taking to have somebody up here, but what might be one out of the five? And you're putting out a bill on something that may or may not even happen. So why even reference it, don't you? So why any of the options, don't you?
I like it. I like it in there, only because no one says you have to have Friday school. But if we have a whole bunch of non-compliant, they're like, hey, we have to do something here, now there's a tool, just say we have to do it.
Yeah, change, a change in storage requirements, et cetera, are barred along.
Right, those kids would show up in the morning, hand over their cell phones, they're in the pocket.
Yeah.
It's up the glacy.
And that's the first step, I think Friday school is the last one. I think we're gonna have policies that talk about Friday school. About the options being out there, so it's just an option, it's not doing it. I would encourage a Friday school, but I'd leave it in there for parents who are like, oh, hey, this is impossible.
I tend to agree with Josh, because we do that a lot by what you, we have all these options, but we can choose. What we choose and what we.
Yeah, but you don't put up an option that you really don't wanna do.
Not that you could do it.
No, but you have it listed in there, it doesn't mean. It's just what the parents can read through and see, these are all the options, and what, us to all these things, food and alcohol. This is what we're saying is going to happen, this is what we're doing it now. But that will be them, but that is no option.
But we wanna threaten them with something that you're fully compliant with.
You're not threatening them. You're, you're not threatening them, you are just letting them see that.
It is a threat, so it is a threat, but it's not an empty threat. It's a threat that would probably never be used. But could be used, and I think that's one policy, is this isn't a viable option, if it gets that point, but it's not saying. I mean, private school can be used for a variety of reasons, the entire sophomore class decided to walk out for week of school, we need not.